This evening and will be retiring with us back to the executive session. We also have Mike Brennan. I think you know the council members. Okay, here we are. Since uh... They're sitting on the agenda. Suppose I could say something right before that has nothing to do with that as far as an announcement, Mike? Regarding Bob. Bob? Yeah, okay. Before we get the meeting started, I wanted to... Many of you knew Councilman Bob Ford. And in case you weren't aware, Bob served the city for I don't know how many years. He was under the Marcy Harper and actually I served with Bob for a while. He passed away on the twenty-seventh and fifty-four years of age. So with that said, I would hope you'd keep him in your thoughts and your prayers also if you do that. Okay. This is the City of Castle Hills on January third, two thousand seventeen. I call the city's special counsel meeting to order and it is now five thirty-three. We'll determine whether a quorum is present and it is. Everyone's here this evening. And uh... Before we put the time down as far as insertion of going into a closed session, the city of council will convene in closed session to consult with its attorneys concerning pending and contemplated litigation regarding the property of Castle Hills First Baptist Church and Basis Charter School and on the matters of which the duly duty of the city's attorneys of the city council under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act in accordance with section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one parentheses one parentheses A and parentheses five of the Texas government code, the city will now convene at five-thirty-five.
Mayor, that second section was parentheses two, not parentheses five. Sorry about that. It was...
Oh!
That last one was two and not five.
Oh, okay. Section five-five-two?
No, five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, one, A, and two.
And two. I'm sorry. Okay, you're right. It's absolutely right. I need to get a new pair of glasses. Okay. So with that said, we are going to convene... I mean, we are going to retire to executive session at five-thirty-five. I would like to make sure that everybody knows that we are streaming live and the live will continue to stream while we're not here. So uh... Just so you know. Thanks.
... As we say, it is what it is. ...... Essentially, they're trying to sell what they want. That's what we said. They're selling it to the only people. It's part of the education. I know it's a big house. And Basis Charter School is a completely connected charter that has a particular you know, they have a particular nicholas. Right now, it's science and technology. In this case, it's very much a college or a university. My own health care society. Since what it's meant to do is to provide... Well, in this case, it's a... What they are is just a wise, essentially, set up. You know, it's wired. It's a lower end of the school district. It's built that parents can decide. You know, I don't have to go to the school. But there's one that's where they can have a contact. What they have is they have a priority. They just want to make an application. So you're changing... I think they have to qualify. Yeah, but you know, they're waiting. And probably like health careers maybe and within one district and then they have implications. That's... And they have... They use a secondary school. They use a secondary school. But yeah, I know my daughter. I think you're right, you know. That's happening. Take kids at a very early age too much. Too much. Find out where you're... Yeah, I was already in this. So much... I don't really think they have... I think one thing's better. There's a... There really must be one. It's... We need a kitchen. And you know, there's mine. I'm thinking of... That's the... Well, it's... But hell, it's hard, you know. It's... I really... I take the... No, seriously. Like, you know, what should I go into? I see you go into something that you're very good at. And that's amazing. It's better for you, you know, just to have satisfaction with what you're doing and still good at it. And I don't care if it's like my daughter. She was specializing in playing with the gypsies. Probably, you know. She's a teacher of writing, which is a... You know, that's... It's... She's a very good teacher. You know, working with... It's gonna spread the... But I think out there... I don't know. It's... If that's what it is, given it's... Of course, it's... Yes, yes. Well, yeah. 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 Unless you have to maintain... Where you're washing, you're careful. And I think... I was just doing my trash. Disability. So it keeps you warm. Yeah. Yeah. I think it was... You know. Really, you... It's not making you... It's not... They don't... I never had... Yeah. We're all... No, yours. So the... Thank you. Fair bar, ladies. Never been... You said the next one. That's why you... That's like... Tell it to... What's my... I got... We get everything we need. Check if they're... I've never been outside. It's ours. It's convenient. It's... It's got to be beautiful. Seriously. So you have to stop. And I listened to you. Great. I just thought I would... Exactly.
So, I think, uh, I was over in San Francisco. I was talking to a guy.
It does, because it's just this.
What ones have they done as far as participating and getting really interested? Have they presented something in? Have they come to the city and asked for any kind of? So, the bad thing is, if you don't pitch one in, it's your right to do it. You can sell it, because you can buy somebody to buy it, it'll be them. So, what do you call it? They didn't tell. Well, what dominates is, what do you think, to create consent? Well, I forgot, it's been so long ago. Because we were here nine day and ninety-nine day. And that was when, um, what's his name, his mayor, big tall guy? Bob, Bob, uh, Bob Anderson. Anderson, that was when he was our mayor. Well, in first place, I've been on zoning for about fourteen years. Um, first part, which had been like fifty years ago, maybe more by now. The church was our good friend, you know? And then they wanted to add to it upstairs. And so, it's like, and, uh, God bless. It says, so three or four stories is our maximum. For this particular thing, it was only a smaller thing, two, three years ago, they touched on it. And piece of it, they built that building piece by piece like they do, but they don't ever have no money. But in the first place, they let a small building go there, that's a story. Zoning did it, and they said, boy, that's it. I read back and said, here they come now. It's a big building, so, so I was zoning, we said, I said, we let you have that one. And you knew then, and it's here it is all in writing, forget it. So, but what they kept saying, we're not building it. We're not building it. You could stand out here and sit, you could stand here and see the floors, you know? So, I went to be, uh, park chief, and I asked him, can you put your money in? Farm and go and make a detail for the part of the park. There, and if that's a floor, it's just gonna be an attic. Okay, so they went and did that, but you know, they got up there and somebody wouldn't let them in. Oh, no, we had to fight to get in for that part that they were working on. Then, along the perimeter, I think he was the guy that was doing all the stuff. He said, yeah, every year, it would be for a year, and then a year, and it would just be just paint and stuff. But they built a real floor, then it's interesting, it wasn't something you just go leave, maybe sell it. So, we had a back end, and you know, and about that, that part of the construction, it's hard. Let her go, they're in church. They denied doing it, so that's when we went to court. And by the time we got to court and the judge and all of this stuff, we went back, back to the old, uh, good old years. So, the judge decided, we will, we will have, we will give some sufficient, they can use it for those floors. But they can't use it for anything, because it seems like having service. You can use it for our house, or something that happens, but it could not be used for anything else. That way, and then they gave them twenty years, and they should, if they owe. So, they got their fourth floor illegally, and their fourth is okay, then we went zoning after those times. So, it ended up, they were doing something with it for twenty years, or we'd get the land back, in the story. We didn't have enough. They owed too much money at that time. They were deeply into it, that was back then, moving on. When I got home, I was going to have a. He had charged away with it, and then three years of the deed. They paid them, I believe, two hundred fifty thousand. But then the one was there twenty year ago.
No, 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 that is the, um, that's just.
They did. I can guess.
So, I have a.
I mean, that's what I'm thinking, seeing.
And they had two, three different things they were saying, just to give you a chance.
No, I saw him, I saw him, I saw his heart, his heart, I knew it was a hole, but it was, it was this part. Well, why not? That's what I'm. Yeah, who are I? So, so relax. So, when they come out, they would.
So, they definitely argue, and they go and do these stuff and everything. And like you say, whoever they are, is on their side, and what, or say, go do it. They shall. If these people are just giving the money, they're, they're a store.
They're already done.
Okay, so they, what, what was the real details, come on?
The court order. No, it's fucking us. It's just my citizens.
And what, what is your?
It's just the, the court order. So, they will listen, so they will have to. Hope the church will, this is, this is what they, what they, what they have.
The point of the big car is when they, when they turn their apron, they come down, see out there. Where's the, their video?
Not necessarily, because they may, churches, churches build residential. The question is, do they have the skill, to build, use the, to answer, do they have the, do they have the, do they have the? Probably for us, do they have to? Or it goes back to this question, because the city has realized that a lot of people, they have a charter school, there's no one. So, that's why, it's positive, they can get, not, they show their, do it for the church, the plan, and the city. So, that's where, that's where I'm from. But, it's basically, they have to, over to architectural service. See, they're, that's just, it's not fair, it's not fair, it's not fair. The brand, I don't remember how this is. And I am able, I would like to. One, I could say, they're. Yeah, oh, that's where I was. That's Susie Lindgren.
No, not that, please, it's a city, very, very.
They kind of act like lawyers or something.
Well, that's what I was. So, I just, my, my change is long enough.
I, I've never met him, I've never seen him here.
I like him, I like him.
Well, he's, he's kind of come to the citizens meeting, and we sure have, on Sunday.
Here it is, he doesn't live here, and he's not very proud.
Buddy used to know the, I used to work there. I used to, I used to, I was, I was, I was, I was.
City, I was, I was. Shouldn't know, I had to say, I do.
But he should still know. It's a, it's a. Because I never take walks. It's just get first cars. I'm a single woman, I don't have. They both, they're, they're monitoring, right, but that's not. Right. This show, or, just having. But it's probably the best feeling. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. That's, that's. And some of those, I'm sure. You're gonna be talking, and how we got is minted, I'll notice, probably everything is minted, I don't know. Well, it's, it's. I don't know. I was thinking, maybe, well, like, I'm, I'm skating for something, but I can't. Yeah, they're all, they're all, there's some, even some of these guys, these guys.
I need to go.
He had this truck. And that was some of the. I don't know. He used to. So. So. But. They would use it. So. He got signed in. And he listened. He wanted him to like. So he said, well, we. I'm sorry about those. We're. And he was like, this way. Or. 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 Yes. He put them on the hall. He's. On. And. I just want to. I want to. Right. Right. This is. This is. So. Well, just gonna have. Okay. It was one of these. She asked those questions. Yeah. Yeah. And she's like, this is. Something. Time to think of this other. Or. Six. To. Two. They were. They were. And. Across the. Bridge. They. He's not trying. He's. Okay. When? They are. They're. Right. Yeah. Well, that was. That was. Start. Very. I don't know. I don't know what. Yeah. And. Can you? Yeah. That's a part of. The. And. Yeah. The bottom. And of course. You know. My sister in law. Yeah. Yeah. And I walked around. Full. So. Yeah. It's kind of. Yes. So. Yeah. Basically. Basically. And. 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 Long. That's. Yeah. It's. It's. Kind of. If you're young. You know. You always get a fortune. And then you get it. And it's. Right. I know. I know. You have information. I just like. I mean. I write. I'm. Oh. I was. Now. I'm. 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 I know. No. I know they've talked about. I think. Like. Yeah. And then comes over. Yes. Yeah. Yes. I watched this. You. So. Yeah. Yeah. And this. So. Yeah. You. They're. Yeah. You saw. Yeah. And. I asked. He said. He called. Sorry. Yeah. And. Yeah. He's. 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 Even the. Oh, it's a real. Remember. There's so much to do. I don't know. Yeah. Went over. Yeah. Um. Three. Oh. I tried. It's. 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 Uh. It's. 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 My. Yeah. It's. It's. Be sure to tell. I didn't. I didn't. Or. Borrowed. And. Yeah. So. Unfortunately. They had. Yeah. Yeah. I. 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 So. They call. Cross. On. The. So. So. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know. No. It's. It's. Combat. And. So. Very. And. And then they took. And. Just five. Things. Someone. Took. Yeah. So. There's. Hard. And. They. They saw. They saw. Just. Yeah. It was. Very narrow. It was. It's. 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 Center. It's. 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 Yeah. It's. Ten people. Now it's good just. Your. Nice. Yeah. And. They left. Just. And. Other. Like. It's. It's. I know. Like. It's. They got. If. Question. It's. She has described. Yeah. That's. That's. And. Played that tape. And. And. She describes. Yeah. That's. That's. So. You can do that on this tour. Then. I remember that. Yeah. Yeah. I. You guys. You guys. I. I. And. Jeremy. And. I. She's not. And. Yeah. 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 That's. Yeah. Yeah. Put. Yeah. Chicago. Yeah. So. Did you go to Saint Mary's? How far? Um. And. Uh. It's. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. And. Which. It's. Okay. I see. I don't. See. Yes. So. And. I told you. Yeah. Yes. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. We also. For. And. 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 Yes. Uh. Personally, my daughter. She's. She's. I don't know. Also. It's great to miss. Yeah. She's. Yeah. And I guess here in town. I love that. She's. 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 That's. As well. And. Overall. Yeah. It's not. Possible. Well. My son. I want. Thank you. She. She. I want. All the way. I want. I'm. 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 He went to Saint Mary's. So. We. Yeah. Well. I'll tell you something. She. In. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah. So. Yeah. So. I. Or. Or. Yeah. Um. But. I. Used to run. Yeah. Yeah. Like. Yeah. Yeah. I really love. Yeah. 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 So. And I. And. I remember. So. Maybe. It's. 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 I know. I like. I. Come on. It's. So. I kind of. It's. Yeah. Yeah. This is. Kind of. Yeah. I. 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 Yeah. 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 I have. This situation. So. So. No. By the. Yeah. 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 I'm. Yeah. Yeah. I got. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I don't. I mean. I. So. I. I don't. It was. About. What. What. Yeah. 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 Ah. Yeah. They will. And. When you were. Yeah. You know. Yeah. And. I think. You know. Well. I'm. Trying to. Together. This. Yeah. 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 At. I need you. Close. It's. I. So. I have. I. Which. JT. I. I. You know. And. Yeah. I know. I. Yeah. 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 The. Black. That's. Yeah. Yeah. Right. Yeah. It's. Yeah. Yeah. It's. Yeah. Going down. I feel like. This. All these practices. Sometimes. I think. And. Yeah. 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 But. They were so. Only. And. That's. That's. Well. Yeah. That's. Yeah. And. Yeah. I. 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 That's. Yeah. 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 It's. Yeah. Yeah. I. First. I saw. That. Like. Other. We were. And. To. Yeah. And. We. Right. So. Yeah. 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 Right. So. Might be. Yeah. And. And. So. We. So. Yeah. We. Last. Yeah. 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 And. Yeah. We got. And. And. Yeah. And. 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 We. We. Like. Yeah. Like. Yeah. 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 And. Yeah. 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 My. She was. She was. She had some other names. And. She's. So. She wasn't. Yeah. We. We. Yeah. 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 There. There's also. I. Actually. I think. My. Around. Around the. Now. Where. Yeah. That's. Yeah. 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 Okay. Wow. Yeah. 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 Alright. I think. You see. From. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. That's. Yeah. Yeah. I know. When. Yeah. Yeah. This is. This is. Yeah. That's. That's going into the. That's. That's. This is. That's. 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 That's the. In front of the campus. Yeah. Yeah. I tell you. Yeah. 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 I. But. So. My. First. Yeah. Okay. So. We. It was. Yeah. Yeah. We'll. So. I. So. 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 I said. October. October. So. 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 I said. So. So. Thirty. Three. Three. Mid. So. Yeah. It was absolutely. It was absolutely. It was. It was absolutely miserable. I still get it. It was absolutely miserable. Saturday. Sixty. Three. Six. You know. Crazy. No. They.[1154.52]
Now, just. I don't know. I also have a question. Um. I mean, you're looking at it. I don't know. It's around the largest. There is why it's up. But then I can go. Yeah. Yes, against the. Yeah. That was. Twenty-four years ago. Because of the. Yes, Delman. Right. Because they played over there. There's some of the. Nice here. From the. Association went up there. One being. There was a. Burning. Oh, sure. Yeah, Jerry McKenna. He was. She was. So you go to his house. They were. Sweet. Okay, so we've been three, four years from right now. We've been three years in a row. And he talks about that. The Delman. He's tired of it. She went over there and said. There is the mother. And. Outlying. She. Had to fly. In our. That was a. Delman. Now, they're not. This was their. Past year. They said no. They keep saying every year is like. She likes. I don't know. Like Valerie. Valerie, the president of the. Association has come. I heard. They talked about her church. There are. Families that they grew up in church. Forty-six. Twenty-two. They're talking about. They're talking about. This is. Just outside. Same. And I had. They had masks on. They had. Yeah. So when you got to. Here. Yes. In that. Again, there's this. Very weird. So doesn't that? Well, then. It's like. It's like. It's not all there. Okay. 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 Brother, the other brothers. 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 Brother, the other brothers.[685.11]
C. Eleven. A traffic impact analysis which determines the impact resulting from traffic and parking generated by any new or remodeled facility located on any roadway within the city. Such impact analysis may be exempted by the Architectural Review Committee if the application is for a project which is expected to generate less than one hundred and fifty persons on any day of the week, or does not materially change the traffic impact existing before the application. The traffic impact analysis shall be prepared by a licensed professional engineer licensed in the state of Texas. Now therefore be it further ordained by the City Council of the City of Castle Hills, Texas that Chapter Eight Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances is amended by adopting the following subsection. Section eight dash eighty-one. Factors to be considered by committee. A traffic impact analysis which determines the impact resulting from traffic and parking generated by any new or remodeled facility located on any roadway within the city. Such impact analysis may be exempted by the Architectural Review Committee if the application is for a project which is expected to generate less than one hundred and fifty persons on any day of the week, or does not materially change the traffic impact existing before the application. The traffic impact analysis shall be prepared by a licensed professional engineer licensed in the state of Texas. This ordinance shall be come effective upon adoption and shall apply to any building permit application received by the city after its adoption. Pass and approve this third day of January twenty seventeen. Timothy A. Howell, Mayor. Two attestations.
Thank you Douglas. Douglas has read the motion. He'll have a copy for you for, I believe. Oh, okay. Do we have a second for that motion, please? Matt seconds it. Counsel, before we go into discussion here in open session, I did want to let you know that we received a petition from several residents over in the area. And I'm going to read the petition and then pass it around to who signed it, okay? Dear Castle Hills City Council Members and Mayor Tim Howell. We understand the city will be considering an ordinance requiring a traffic impact study for certain projects on Tuesday, January the third, two thousand seventeen. Given the negative impact extreme traffic increase has on the city and the existing residential neighborhoods, we as Castle Hills residents are in favor of this action and hope the ordinance is passed amending Chapter Eight of the Code of Ordinances. Thank you for your consideration. And I'm going to pass this around so everyone can see who signed it. Everybody got a copy? I'm sorry. Did you get a copy? Good, you got a copy? Great. All right. That's terrific. Okay. With that said, we have an ordinance, we have a motion, and we have a second by Mr. Daggett. We'll go into discussion now. Mr. Trevino, did you have any comments regarding the item, please?
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. I feel this ordinance is, it puts a responsibility on whoever's developing any kind of business or establishment to have the neighborhood in mind and make sure that there is responsible growth for the traffic. And that we become more proactive and less reactive to the problems that we as a city face.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Mr. Daggett, did you have any questions or comments regarding the item on the table, please?
I just second what JR said.
Thank you. Mr. Squire, did you have any comments or observations?
Couple of questions, Mayor, if I may. Mr. Brennan, in trying to do a little research on this, I just wanted to verify and like your comments on this too, but is there anywhere in our current ordinances when a developer comes in that requires, specifically requires a traffic study?
There's general wording in Chapter Eight, the Building Code, section of the code, that requires consideration of building patterns and traffic patterns, I think, but there's nothing specific at the moment that requires a traffic impact analysis.
So this will, I guess, correct that?
Yeah. This clarifies that that general provision that's already in the code to include a specific document that needs to be submitted with the building permit application.
And with this, with this in place, will the, and a traffic study is done by, assumed by the engineer, by the applicant, the, will the city have the opportunity to, you know, get a chance to look at that before it moves forward by our own engineer? Is there anything precluding that?
Not at all. The plans and development plans now are submitted to the city's engineer after receipt by the city staff. And this would be one more document or one more part of the submission to our own city engineer.
And that engineer would either have to recommend for or against based on their analysis, correct?
Sure, but modifications.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Paul, do you have any questions or comments regarding the item on the table, please?
No, I'm kind of, be honest with you, when we started looking in this a couple of months ago, I'm surprised that the ordinance hasn't defined this, like, because of the expansion that we've been seeing in our city. So I'm, I'm for this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory, did you have any comments or questions regarding the item on the table, please?
I want to remind the council that this requires a supermajority for it to pass because this is a special session of the council.
Mayor, I need to make one clarification of that. It's a supermajority for a quorum, but once the quorum is set, there needs to be four members present at a special meeting, but they're all present, so it will just require a normal majority vote to pass.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brennan. All right. Before we take a roll call vote. Brother Dooling, actually on this one, we didn't have a sign up sheet. No, we didn't. Excuse me. Kim, will you grab the sign up sheet, please? That was a roster for who attended tonight.
There is also, there was a sign up sheet on the table, and I think it was four or five people signed up. It's an open session.
Yes, but in a, in a case like this where we were, hang on a second. Mr. Brennan?
It's my understanding there was nothing on the agenda for citizens to be heard tonight, which is not required to be on the agenda. The city has received no application for any permit or anything regarding any projects. And therefore, there's really not much to, to...
But this is an ordinance being passed, an open session, and you're saying we can't comment on it?
It's up, it's up to the council, but I...
It was opposed to the agenda.
Well, that, all of that doesn't make any difference, Brother Dooling. It's not on the agenda.
It is on the agenda.
No, it's not. Look on the agenda.
I'm talking about citizens to be heard. I'm talking about open session, item one.
Yeah, there's no law that says that there has to be citizens to be heard on any item on any agenda at any meeting.
Well, I thought the U.S. Constitution took care of something.
Nope, doesn't.
I thought democracy took care of something.
No, it doesn't.
Oh, so we're not a... Then why was the paper put out for people to sign up to speak?
Don't know about that one.
Yeah, well, maybe you should.
Well, guess we'll find out.
Actually, hang on. I understand. Actually, there was an attendance roster, and there was one sheet back there for the special city council meeting, and there is one thing under name that says B-R-O-T-H.
That was the other sheet. There were actually two.
These are all rosters.
Well, I'm sorry, five of us stood there and signed, so somebody's hiding the sheet. There was a agenda sheet, I was first named on it, and my name was right after it. I started writing on the other sheet and then saw he was writing on the correct one, and I followed him and wrote behind it.
All right, based on the United States Constitution, as Brother Dooling brought up, can I have the attendance roster, please, back again?
Mayor, it wasn't the attendance roster, it was...
Mr. Dooling, I, I don't know that anybody would steal something like that. If we have a thief in here, let's find out who it is.
The sheet had said list the item number you wish to speak on.
Well, it's not here.
Well, it wasn't.
Okay. Did anybody else see it? So you saw it too. You all saw, so we do have a thief here somewhere?
Well, the sheet is missing, that's all I'm saying. It's not...
Ladies and gentlemen, as the mayor, we're obviously going to bring, excuse me, sir? Excuse me?
I did not accuse anybody of any...
Okay, we're going to go by the attendance roster because that seems to be what is back there on the people who, I'm assuming, we'll call them off name by name as they're written here. That's why we have a sign up sheet when we have, this is, to me, nothing has been put before the city. So what, what we're going to do here is obviously let people speak. For what? Nobody has turned in an application. Nobody has stepped forward. So with that said, the first person on the attendance sheet is Quentin Baker.
And I was the first one to sign up on the other list, too. I am speaking in favor of the motion. I have a couple of language changes to suggest, just to make sure that we've got good language in our ordinance. You read different language than was in the version that I got. So apologies if I didn't track along with you, but let me give you a couple of suggestions. You may have already addressed these. We mentioned a licensed professional engineer. In the draft version that I saw, there was language that says, "or other expert whose credentials are acceptable to the Architectural Review Committee." That strays, that phrase, "or other expert," has that been carried forward? Has that struck? Okay, that takes care of one criticism. The other was mention of a Texas licensed engineer. Was Texas stuck in there? Thank you. Okay, on section eight eighty-one, paragraph ten, the metric that's being used is this, it was a hundred persons, and I think he mentions a hundred and fifty now persons. In the draft language, that was ambiguous whether that hundred or a hundred and fifty pertained to the facility, meaning the building, or the trips. So the language was ambiguous enough, you can interpret either way, and that's why I wanted to see if we could get a language clarification to make sure we're, we had a really tight ordinance here. And my, my suggestion, I actually wrote a correction up, and Kimberly, I think, may have given it to you, was to try to clarify the language. My suggestion was put it in terms of number of vehicle trips so that it's unambiguous. And I was going to suggest that, yeah, you, you limit it to fifty vehicle trips per day on any day of the week. The hundred people using something is ambiguous. Is that a hundred people using the streets or a hundred people using the building? So to get rid of that ambiguity, my suggestion was change it to vehicle trips, and then it's unambiguous, okay? So I'm just trying to get better language so that it's clear for anybody reading this ordinance where it might be. All right? The rest of the change, I think you've changed it enough that I don't know that my edit is appropriate, but those were the key points I wanted to put forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Dooling?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brother Dooling, two zero one, Gladiola Lane. And actually, I'm in favor of the ordinance too, but I had exactly the same read. I don't have a copy in front of me, so I had to just catch it as Douglas was speaking. But to me, there's no nexus between traffic and persons. So it just seems to me, it, it's not tightly written because you're wanting a traffic study, but you're talking about persons. So if the building brings people by bicycle or, you know, I don't know, it just, I, I like Quentin's language better, there may be other language, but I think you call it a traffic study, but there's never a nexus about vehicles providing X number of people. And I agree with Quentin, people isn't the issue, it's the number of cars, buses, bicycles, cabs, Uber, you name it. Something along that line. And just on the other question, generally, before you all vote on anything, any ordinance, people are allowed to have a comment.
Brother Dooling, we were advised by our council not to have citizens to be heard tonight because of the situation where they have given us nothing. This puts us in a very, very precarious situation.
No, I understand about citizens to be heard, that, that was...
It's not citizens to be heard, it's talking on the issue.
Yeah.
They have done nothing. They have not given us an application, they have not given us anything in order to move forward. We don't even know if they're going to do it.
Well, I understand that, but my only point was, when I heard Douglas talking, I'm also a lawyer, and when I heard it, I said, same thing Quentin said, I, there's, there's a problem with that language there. And if you vote on it tonight and that language goes through, you may have a problem down the street. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Robert Crawford. Peter Bella.
Peter Bella, one ten Hibiscus. Thank you for hearing us, and I'm in support of the ordinance. Thank you.
Suzie Moody.
Hello, I'm Todd Truby, one twenty-five West Castle Lane. I guess the only que, more of a question than a statement is, if the entity is required to do a traffic study, that's, I guess, to my mind, the first step. What are the results after the study's done? Is there a guideline that there's going to be, okay, if, if meets this, then this is the result, or what happens beyond the study?
We need to let the attorneys answer that.
It's just like any other factor to be considered. If the ARC and the city council determine that, based on the traffic study, as well as all of the other factors that are in the code, is, is insufficient or is unacceptable, then the ultimate action could be to decline the application, turn it down. In the real world, what really happens is, once all the documents are submitted and reviewed by the staff and the engineer and anybody else that's interested, if there are some deficiencies or defects, or matters that need to be corrected, usually there's, you know, the people are given the opportunity to make adjustments, modifications, and hopefully to arrive at a, a, a plan that's, works. But if not, the ultimate act could be to decline the application.
All right. Thank you very much, someone.
Thank you, Todd. Maria Breed.
Mr. Mayor, can I have three minutes to talk with Mr. Brennan?
We'll take a three minute recess to talk to Mr. Brennan.
Thank you.
Douglas, would you mind if we get through citizens to be heard, I mean, citizens to be heard on the thing? Just to keep the flow going here. Thank you. Maria Breed. Lisa Poole. Stephen Ackley. Jackie Ackley. Trey Curry. I'm not sure exactly who this is. Forgive me for TJ Castellina. Twenty, one twenty-eight South Winston? Yes, sir. You okay? Thank you, sir. Mirana Castaneda? Thank you. I'm sorry, I don't know who this is either. One twelve West Castle Lane. Jean Kelly. Wow, that's quite a signature there. Thank you, Jean. Looks like mine. Okay, are we sure that's it? Okay. Let's, let's call a three minute recess, if you don't mind, for Douglas to visit with the attorneys, please. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there, before, before we actually move on and move on to the next stage, is there anyone else who would like to speak that, that hasn't spoke or hasn't signed up? Okay, then we'll run through this again.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend my motion.
Okay. We have amendment on the table. Go ahead.
To change under section eight dash eighty-one. A traffic impact analysis which determines the impact resulting from traffic and parking generated by any new or remodeled facility located on any roadway within the city. Such impact analysis may be exempted by the Architectural Review Committee if the application is for a facility which is expected to be used by less than one hundred and fifty persons on any day of the week, or does not materially change the traffic impact existing before the application. The traffic impact analysis shall be prepared for, prepared by a licensed professional engineer licensed in the state of Texas for the councils. Per usual, I've just changed one word on the fourth line from project to facility, and struck generate and replaced it with by, used by.
Douglas, before you go further on, we need to make the, if that change is going to be made in your motion, it needs to also be made in C eleven. Same wording.
Mr. Brennan, should I re-read the revised C eleven?
Yes.
C eleven should now read. A traffic impact analysis which determines the impact resulting from traffic and parking generated by any new or remodeled facility located on any roadway within the city. Such impact analysis may be exempted by the Architectural Review Committee if the application is for a facility which is expected to be used by less than one hundred and fifty persons on any day of the week, or does not materially change the traffic impact existing before the application. The traffic impact analysis shall be prepared by a licensed professional engineer licensed in the state of Texas.
What did that change? Oh, so we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, John. What did that change as far as what?
Could I make a comment? One of the citizens' suggestion was to transfer this to a limit on vehicles, or vehicle trips. And that gets confusing because it, you know, it can be a bus with fifty people on it, it can be a bicycle with one person on it, it can be a pedestrian, I don't know, or, you know, it, it has a wide range of meaning, meanings. So what we're trying to do is to require the traffic impact analysis to address traffic, and then a second, I mean, another exemption would be if it's a facility which is expected to be used by less than one hundred and fifty persons a day, you know, a small facility such as a office or something, then in that case, it wouldn't have to go through the traffic impact analysis activity.
Y'all both agree? You both agree?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the intent of that.
Okay, good. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second on...
When you are reviewing the notes, please put in Mr. Brennan's verbiage of the intent of what was being done, word for word. That should be in the minutes.
Can you, can we give her a copy to make sure that...
Are we recording this?
Yes, sir. I, I will make sure it's there.
Okay, Mike.
Okay, good. Yeah, okay, so we, we have a first, and we have a motion, and we have a second. Mr. Trevino, do you have any comments on that, please?
No, sir.
What about you, Mr. Daggett? What about you, Mr. Squire? That's exactly right. Do you have anything, Mr. Paul? Mr. Douglas, you probably don't have anything. Okay, with that said, all in favor of the amendment to the motion? Okay, let's go back to the original motion. We're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Trevino?
I vote to accept the motion.
Mr. Daggett?
Aye.
Mr. Squire?
Aye.
Mr. Paul? Mr. Gregory?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a unanimous vote. Thank you, counsel. And with that said, I believe we're done. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight.